Number one, we're ready to begin this game 2025. I'm the City Council. If you wish to address the council and I'd be pleased to talk with you. Comment on your location, drive, or see to the right. I ask you to call school and send it to us. This time we move on to the agenda message invitation. We'd like to call forward Mayor Toremore. South of the lake, we learn a nice communication. Let's hold our main standing after Mr. Toremore.
Father's Prayer. Father, we thank you for the fact that we live in a country where we can meet like this. Witness the leadership of our city. By people who are involved in the leadership and those who are interested in management of our city. We thank you for the service provided by our mayor, by our vice mayor, by the members of the council. We thank you for the service provided also by those who are hired to serve in this way. City attorney and the city managers, first responders and law enforcement. People who walk into areas of danger rather than away from them. Father, we just thank you for that we are here this evening. Father, may this be a time of listening, of discussion, of deliberation. I mean, the decisions made be in accordance with your will for the city. As those who is in leadership, those who have been in place of leadership, had the responsibility of doing so. Thank you again for their leadership and their service provided for our community. For it's in your holy and precious name we pray. Amen.
May your peace, love, and your blessings be with us.
Please, with the fight of the United States of America. And to the republic, the which stands, our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have an act of electing the new servant of the past. You know, for the up to make our city the health of the world. Purple Act is the three attorneys who live in the homes. This is why this town's been a lot of the time. And this is why we want to wrap, when the customer would like to know. About life, and the council members. I would like to invite the mayor. Attorney Allen is our city manager, here before you. Attorney Allen is the assistant city manager of Dan's Florida. And now, there is first City Council meeting. To the assistant city manager of Florida, like is our new assistant city manager, Al. And then, before we enter the bookwork, one of the quick ones. We'll go first to our earlier employee, Chris. And then, I'd like to call to Chris Thorne from Clearwater, D.
Chris Thorne began his professional journey with the United States Air Force. Where he developed the discipline and commitment that would define his career. Following his military service and the completion of his college degree. Chris entered the gas industry as a sales representative for a local propane supplier. His exceptional performance quickly drew the attention of competitors, including Clearwater Gas. In May of 1995, after some persuasive recruiting. Chris joined the Clearwater Gas System as a builder representative. In this role, he cultivated key relationships with local developers. Crafted cost-effective proposals and secured contracts for the residential and commercial developments within the Clearwater Gas service area. His contributions were instrumental in expanding natural gas services to previously uncertain communities in Clearwater, Palm Harbor, Targan Springs, and South Pasco County. Chris's achievements did not feel unnoticed. In September of 1998, he was honored with the Florida Natural Gas Association Marketer of the Year Award. Recognizing his outstanding impact in the field. A few months later, in November of 1998, Chris was promoted to Sales Manager. Where he led a sales division with distinction. Can do best practices, set and achieve ambitious sales goals. And mentor his team during a time of rapid growth. Helping CGS become one of the fastest-growing municipally-owned utilities in the country. In response to ship and departmental needs after the Great Recession. Chris transitioned to his current role as Commercial Representative. A position he continues to excel in today. He works closely with new businesses and restaurants to establish natural gas services. While also engaging existing commercial customers to educate them on the benefits of converting to cost-effective, reliable, natural gas. Since 2010, Chris has sold over 2.2 million in appliances. Delivered 6.65 million firms of natural gas. Sold 41,571 gallons of LP propane gas and added 2,633 new customers. Outside of his work, Chris enjoys off-road adventures and dangerous with his longtime partner, Teddy. Thank you, Chris, for 30 years of dedicated service. Your commitment to teamwork, customer service, and civic duty exemplifies our strategic plan of superior public service. And truly shows how you make Clearwater thrive. Thank you.
Our next service award is our bi-monthly team award for 2025. This time I'd like to call forward our Papa Permanente, who I sense is there. David, Paul, and your new members, Sarah Kessler, and Jeanne.
In the aftermath of Kurt Keats, Elena Milton, the planning department took swift action to support the community. By establishing the Beach Papa Permanente Center. This initiative was designed to streamline the recovery process. Providing residents and business owners with direct access to staff, critical information, and boarding guidance. The core team members, Rocky, David, Adrian, Dylan, Jeanne, and Sarah. Have played a vital role and admit as under success. Every day since this launch, the dedicated team has been onsite at the beach. Engaging with homeowners and contractors. Assessing property damage and offering essential resources to facilitating rebuilding. Strategically positioned in the heart of the affected area. The Papa Center ensures that those impacted by the storms receive timely, accessible support. Beyond providing technical assistance on regulations and rebuilding. Staff will serve as compassionate presence, offer displaced residents hope and reassurance that the community will rebuild together. Since opening on October 8th of 2024, the team's commitment has been unwavering. Despite the death of daily challenge of navigating beach traffic ongoing road disruption. They were open every business day until the recent closure on March 28th of 2025. During that time, they served over 730 customers. With more than 1,300 storm damaged properties. The team's goal has always been to expedite the permitting process and get residents back into their homes and businesses open. As of early mid-April of 2025, their efforts have contributed to the issuance of over 1,900 storm damage repair permits. A remarkable achievement. This initiative has been a true collaboration across the city apartments. Initially operating out of Barbara Police Command Center bus. The team relocated when the unit was commandeered for a lot of push and ease. Excuse me, parts of recreation then stepped in, providing space at the beachfront center's pool office. While IT and building maintenance quickly prepared for the new workspace. And then, report members of the Beach Papa Permitting Team to an individual day talk. Other planning development teams stepped in to fill their roles. Ensuring an uninterrupted service for our community. Well, this nomination recognizes six individuals as a testament to the power of teamwork across the city. Through their tireless dedication, the Beach Papa Permitting Team has not only facilitated recovery. But they are also embodying the spirit of resilience, service, and community. Their efforts truly make their mark on the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
I'll go through our next first proclamation. First off, this came up here, there are a lot of things we did. Loud, through hurricane response. But I can't say any of the difference like that. To really make great strides in the past. So, I thank the people very much. City Council. I want to do that in 4.2. And I've got to listen to faith and family month. You sound like Paul Four Daniel Renard, if somebody cares.
And these are just some of the other pastors, some of them are involved here, that might not know who they are.
I'll read them out, and then you can decide. Whereas Faith and Family Month 2025 will place an emphasis on family by the faith community. And encourage participants to be family centered to the entire local community. And whereas the Adventist faith example month 2025. Is to encourage churches and businesses to support and encourage families to navigate this. It's paid for without giving any other reasons. From less mental lives to healthier relationships. And whereas churches and businesses to be organizing service days. Youth doctor, National Forum today, U8, and the forming conferences. And whereas families of exercise and faith and very good worship and practice. Are less likely to have social realities, something composed by us, force, faith, helps family members of what God is intention. Pride, violence, and personal pain. Whereas faith and family month will make us even stronger by encouraging and strengthening families of Clearwater. Making them healthier and productive and loving. Now therefore, I wish to thank the mayor of the City of Clearwater. On behalf of Clearwater City Council. We hereby proclaim June 25th. We thank the family of Clearwater. And as small citizens, we join you. Thank you for the long, hard work and dedication for that.
Thank you, Graham. Appreciate it. I want to just first introduce those who are here. This is Pastor Paul Four. And he's with the President of Alpha, I don't know if you're aware. And this is Catherine Heck, she is the pastor and director of Lowen River Ministries. And this is Pastor Ken Hope, he's with Lady Stone Church and Clearwater. And this is Gabriel and Sabrina Bogart. And they are with the City Gate Revival Center. And of course, you know, Director of Salvation Army, Ted Morris. So, these are just some of the folks that are gathering together to help promote faith in the community. And as you know, the concert that's there. And then the conference on the family that Alpha also, who we're very excited about. But mayor, your help and your leadership has really brought about, really a snowball effect. In that our churches and organizations and businesses in Tampa and Pasco County. And even in Polk County, in the city of Lakeland. That are taking up the mantle of Faith and Family Month. For claiming that throughout all these areas, and we just going to continue to expand. So, we want to thank you and for looking forward and helping us to promote. And you were plenty, to you and the speakers, yeah.
Thank you for coming to that certainly. Families need strength more than ever, with all the things coming at them nowadays, technology, particularly. Strength to families, certainly supporting the needs of the grownups and faith in our families. So, I hope that will spread throughout Clearwater, not a sample of that region, but safe for everyone. I thank you for organizing this Faith and Family Month.
Thank you, sir.
Sir, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Good evening.
We now move to line 4.3 on the agenda. We have PMS 34.5. And this time I'd like to call forward Anthony Mesko from Hope City for one of the events. Whereas the 20.5 PMS 33, which is getting announced, is being here. Surfing reminding people that covered air emergency medical meetings are faced with so many new challenges. Lives, and yet they still lies about them. We continue to respond, support, and care for these large families. And whereas rapid access to quality emergency medical care dramatically improves. The survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness. And whereas emergency medical services stations already try to provide lifesaving units. It goes in the 24 hours, seven days. And whereas the emergency medical services station consists of emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others. And whereas the members of emergency medical services stations. Begins with thousands of hours of specialized training and continued education for kids to life-saving skills. Now therefore, I wish to thank the Mayor of the City of Clearwater. When we have the bookstores and the councils. We hereby proclaim May 18th through 2025 to the Emergency Medical Services Week. Thank you, Greta.
Thank you.
This is line 4.3, uh, season 4.4, National Safe Recovery Week. This time I'd like to call forward Catherine, who is also part of the organization. See you tonight, guys. Whereas a 17th through 23rd is National Safe Recovery Week. And whereas voting is one of the largest recreational activities for residents and businesses. And whereas protection applied, and of course, in marine company are legal and moral responsibilities of everybody. And whereas the City of Clearwater purge, all voters, including organizations. Who consider this occasion to renew their determination of cursing and having sense of floating at all times. And whereas to this day, all voters have to continue the spirit of safe recovery throughout the entire year. Now therefore, I wish to thank the Mayor of the City of Clearwater. On behalf of Clearwater City Council. We hereby proclaim 17th through 23rd, 2025, the National Safe Recovery Week. Captain Nora, I want to thank you and those dark stories for all you do, all you do. To help educate members of those safety. And trying to make our waterways safer. If we don't add more to participate in your educational programs and activities. We would all, we would all be safer. And have a wonderful, so thank you very much.
If I could please, I'd just like to very quickly introduce Mike, Somside, Letsy, Joe, Peter. How, Mike, I'm sorry, Mike, Andre, Gerard, Steve, and Lisa first. Thank you again for the proclamation. It's so important to us, to add to your residents. As the Coast Guard facility in Clearwater is celebrating its 75th year. I hope you all enjoy the months that we've placed up there. I'd like to emphasize just a few safety items. Always wear your life jacket. If your boat's equipped with an engine cutoff switch, use it, okay? Always wear your life jacket. Boat sober. In case I didn't say it before, always wear your life jacket. I want to invite the boaters to meet us at Bel Air Boat Ram this coming Saturday. We're going to be doing festival safety checks. And if your boat is nice and safe and listens to discussion with us. You'll get a deep out of safety seal. And finally, we're offering a Boat America class on the 24th and 25th of this month. In our Clearwater headquarters, I'd love you to come and be safe from the water. Even if they're new boaters or seasoned boaters, it's never bad to have a refresher. Finally, you can find us at www.cgautsclearwater.com. And again, thank you.
This time on line 4.5, we have the Water Marines Week 5.2. This time I'll call forward Nick Targan from Public Security. Whereas safe, safe, clean, and sustainable water resources are central to Thor's environment, family, citizens, and visitors. And whereas a low flow of water supplies and finite state population lead to water resources increasingly decreased. And whereas Clearwater Marines are just nearly 3.6 million gallons of replanning water per day. Approximately 33% of the mixed water. To conserve fresh water supplies and recharge our fresh water resources. And whereas Clearwater's permitted reuse capacity is more than 12 million gallons. Approximately 42% of Clearwater's total permitted capacity for all investing waste water free is so insane. And whereas made every way a dry month, with water demands are high. It's a good time to educate residents on that. Say so for fresh water resources in water reuse. Now therefore, I wish to thank the Mayor of the City of Clearwater. On behalf of the Clearwater City Council. We hereby proclaim by 18th through 24th, 2025, to the forum of our ministry. Thank you for coming to the South of California.
Thank you, mayor and council, for supporting our reuse system. I'd like to introduce some of the people that manage through that reuse system. Leonard Cox is the supervisor too of the reclaim system. Andrew Loveout is the assistant manager of reclaim wastewater collection system. Michael Rockett. The manager of the wastewater, water distribution, and reclaim distribution system. And Michael Flanagan, Assistant Director.
Thank you, gentlemen, because thank you all for helping us insert the honor. I have a 4.6 on the agenda. Public Works Week 5.2. I call forward Jeremy Ailes House, here in Hollywood. Whereas public works for best agents for infrastructure facilities and services that are not as sustainable and resuming with. High quality, and well-being of citizens and society. And whereas these infrastructure facilities and services could not utilize. Without dedicated efforts, public works, professionals, designers, managers, and employees at all levels. And by the sector. Who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting coordination, transportation, water supply, water treatment. And solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities, essential to our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, city leaders, and children in City of Clearwater. To be notified about and maintained, enjoying, understanding, and the reports of public programs in those respective communities. And whereas, near 2025 marks the 65th annual National Public Works Day. Sponsored by the American Public Works Association. And today, your public works association. Now therefore, I wish to thank Mayor of the City of Clearwater. On behalf of the Clearwater City Council. We hereby proclaim by 18th through 24th, 2025, to the National Public Works Day. Thank you for coming after night, in the last few minutes.
I really also wanted to highlight some public works. Include public utilities, gas, solid waste. So, when they're doing appreciation, we just want to write back all the donations within the city. Jeremy's house is here tonight because he accepted the permanent assistant director. So, told him, go out and celebrate with his family. So, good news is now our assistant director.
And we're so thankful for all of you, you too. See, Clearwater, ladies and gentlemen, you're safe. We now move to line 5.4.
Group number 125, we think, and we gave 129 on 2025, special City Council meeting, as to their main summation.
Would you like to have a question, one? Hold it in favor.
Aye.
Hold. Now, Luke, if you can sit, we definitely can.
I presume, I presume all items are up here, gentlemen.
I'd like to look at line 6.1.
A pre-press sponsorship and wave of requests and fees for age, height, and character-sponsored special events and estimated costs for impact services of $514,990. And general fund funding for community advantage and sponsorship program cash contributions of $150,000, but since this will be a completely private one, save the current medical budget submission, not by superposition, thank you, thanks.
Good evening, mayor, and council members of our Cato Director Department, our creation. The item for you this evening is the annual sponsorship special event budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026. We'll discuss this at our Monday work session, and if there's additional information, you can see on the live.
I'm very looking forward to it, because I just think I hear that. Good evening. My name is Philip Ketchens. I kind of want to apologize for pulling this off the agenda. I live on Seaver Drive, which is part of Turkey Park. This has been made that if Ruth would no longer come and fund Seaver, I guarantee you, it's there. And it's going to stay there. Two people already on this street in Soul and House, Seaver Drive. If you come, Hercules, you now have to go again. I should have explained earlier.
This is again, I was regarding the hiding that...
The Turkey Park, you... On my work session, you included Turkey Park discussion in this. Is this not appropriate?
It's not my idea.
Okay, is it not appropriate to comment on Turkey Park? Okay. No, I just, I beg you, beg you to forgive me. I thought because you all made comments about Turkey Park and the way it was run, you and you both made comments about Turkey Park. So if it's not appropriate, I'll come back.
He'll go ahead.
No, I'll come back. No, the whole point I want to make is I want Clearwater safe. This event and my, I wrote down, can we run this safe, run safely in year 2025? I've lived in this neighborhood for 30 years. I've seen every Turkey Park for that period of time. And it's cut to the point that I don't know. And you guys talk about getting out and about. I don't see all of you guys out and about as much as I do. I read in the mail, I read in the manager, I don't read all of you guys. But last weekend, the number one item people wanted to talk to about was pedestrian safety. We have invented that I can give you examples of cars and people on the route at the same time. Dangerous. Particularly living at the end of the route where the stragglers come. And not only that, the police use unmarked cars and go up and down the route. I've seen, I've seen ambulances come through the route and, you know, sirens on, runner tattooed, and come out of the way. So that's the whole comment that we, we're now into an event that is morphed into something that didn't begin as it was supposed to be. It was supposed to be all on, and not only that, none of this, none of this race is run in any neighborhoods with homelessness association. It would have never gotten it. But Seaver has no homelessness association. When you have two people in Soul and House, and there's a, there's a house on sale on that street for $2.2 million right now. The average price in that, in that neighborhood is very high with no homelessness association. And the only, the only thing you can do, either stay in Clearwater or leave. And, and I hate for it to be that boat. But it, it, when, when I see Clearwater, I'm being primitive, but I don't like it, but it, it's, it's a race that I see every year that I hold my breath that somebody didn't get hurt. And when I, I have gone to two funerals last year for pedestrians that got killed here in Clearwater. It becomes very personal. When you lose friends on Pinellas Trail because there's not an adequate lighting system to stop the car. I mean, talking about the power line trail intersected through right nearby Home Depot at the home. But that, I mean, you know, I said my piece, we've got to be safe. We've got to say to the pedestrians, thank you for your time and indulge for better.
Hi, friends. I don't even know your name, but it's nice to see a new face here. And I hope that you actually will listen to some of the things that we say. Now, me personally, you know I don't live near Clearwater. And I drove four hours just to come here to talk about that. And from, I can remember back when we talked about selling Drew Street or Garden Street or whatever, and like, oh, we're doing this to hold more money into the city. Well, here's $514,000 that you probably don't really need to spend. There's a, you know, the same thing with the two half million dollar boats. If you're really trying to save money and get rid of things that don't make money, I just named off this, your boats, and we can talk about Station Square where Ms. Dexera and Emily, you can get rid of that. They pay 11% of the HOA fees, but you're willing to give, you know, half million dollars. You know, oh, I forgot, Ms. Dexera, here you go. I'm going to tell it again. How am I out of order? I'm addressing this. I am addressing the situation here, giving out a half a million dollars, and you want to save money in this city. What are you talking about? The half million dollars, that's the problem. You want to save money in this city, get rid of exorbitant amounts of money. Because there's war. There's about, there's, yes, you pulled it off. I did. I'm going to go through each one of these, every single one of them, like, why? Pay attention, Poirier, look up. I love Slaughter, he looks handsome. I'm going to go sit down in my chair because I got plenty more to say.
Anyone else here who'd like to discuss the, what we just said, to how we could handle this?
Group number 6.1, second.
Please, in favor. Aye. Hold, yes.
I've heard a person I met from a group between Boys and Girls Club and Decent Water Systems, and see if they're wired to change the name from Boys and Girls Club to Decent Water Systems to Boys and Girls Club of 3028. And she is addressed on 2302, 10 lines, drive, speed 150, north of Laura, 337, South Lawn, 213, 07, north of LA, in Tampa, Laura, 3360, Southern, all present, thank you, thank you.
Mayor, council members, we discussed this at a Monday work session. Come on, my, if there's any questions you have, I'll be answering.
Hi, friends. I went through some of the, you know, PowerPoints and blah, da, 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 and I didn't really understand what, why is the First Amendment to the agreement? Because from what I understand, the Boys and Girls Clubs already get money from the government. So I don't know why Clearwater, sure, you want to make your name long, and you're like, we're, we're supporting the Boys and Girls Club, which I don't have a problem with, or the YCA. I just don't know why it's on a consent agenda item, and whenever I go to look to see, well, where's the numbers? Are there any numbers? Is this just a free thing? Or is this us, you know? I wouldn't have drove four hours just to talk about nonsense. You know, let, let, let people understand. How many people wa, I looked at your YouTube channel, 100 people watched your frigging video. So if 100 people out of 120,000 solvency doesn't understand how to go to your PDFs and all this, why not just write it? Why doesn't this guy just say it? You know, is this going to cost the taxpayers money? That's my question. That'd be the first thing. Anytime you put something on this agenda, usually it involves money, and you want to save money. Like I've heard you say about the whole garden and this and this, and you want to save money. I'm, I'm going to continue to say, I've got, I've got five things that I've, I've exposed on my YouTube channel, how you can save right now over, prior to this, $2 million if you just got rid of it. But I'm going to leave this one alone, and I'll see you in just a minute.
Anyone else desire to speak? Here, you're on, it's the public sector.
Move to group number 96.1, you want to say?
The Super Water Board, often, they go and take Florida on a consulting services contract with the driving committee of the Clearwater Harbor, your north decent work, repair project, with the amount of $125,000 in Florida, so much for qualifications, 34/23, engineer of urban consulting services, and applies superposition, thank you, thank you.
Good evening, council, mayor, Mike Adalbert, aviation director. As discussed in Monday's work session, this item is to approve a agreement to repair the, or to design and repair a marina from our mainly, on behalf of your missions.
All right. Once again, I put this specific item about the marina and the boats and that the boats that you're not even running right now because of the accident that happened, traffic in its way, that wasn't even the boat that you guys already had in hand. And you're not even using the boat right now, from my whistleblower. So for you to sit here and say, I want 100, save 145,000, you already have 40, I think it's 45 million allocated to this frigging marina, and you have to have another 100, why wasn't this 145 put into that $45 million? And you just let these boats? Wait. I get that you need a marina, because it's not just the, the, the Clearwater ferry. You've got, you know, chopping boat tours, you've got the, the pirate ship, you've got all these other entities that bring money into you. I get that. But you really want to save money? I think this should have already been done prior. Even me, when I, when I was running restaurants, I would literally, literally write things up, exactly what I wanted, whatever it was, an oven, whether it was a frigging refrigerator, I wrote up, and there was no hidden fees behind the scenes. It was like, this is what it costs, this is how much it costs to install, and this is, and I give you all the numbers. But for some reason, I've been in numerous meetings about this arena and these boats, and for some reason, more money, more money. And just like I said before, Clearwater, made the money, yay! I'm paying for those FDOs that you guys got. I'm going to be paying for some of this right here. If this comes out of taxpayers' money, not only myself that lives four hours away, but every person in here, and you can't even say you guys are the taxpayers, but how do you pay taxes when you get paid by tax money? It's not possible. And don't say that you're paying taxes on this $145,000 that should have already been allocated for your frigging marina. You started out at like 13 million almost eight years ago, and now here you are today at 45 million. And now, everybody, listen, we're just adding more money. You're just adding more. Yeah, I just, I'm going to talk to the people. What did I? Are you? I, I'll turn my back, because you're all a bunch of fucking pieces of fucking shit. Fuck you, fuck you.
Mr. Taylor, Mr. Taylor, you're being...
I'm leaving, dude. I'm walking backwards. Hey, just make sure that she gets her chocolate. Marsher, make sure she gets her chocolate, you pieces of shit. I didn't even do anything.
You're being friendless from this meeting.
I know, I'm leaving. Am I walking backwards, you stupid fuck?
Thank you.
Fuck you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, go fuck yourself. Fuck you too. I'll be back to the next meeting, and I'll keep coming back just to speak on consent agenda. Just give the people the public comment back the way it was, and I will walk away from this fucking shit, sir. I'm walking out, dude. There's no, there's no timeframe on how fast I have to walk, right?
Yeah, he's going.
Long as I'm walking, long as I'm...
You're walking. Watch your back, sir. Watch your back.
I didn't even do nothing.
Yeah, I got stung in.
So, name and badge number?
Sergeant Matthew Richmond, 8441.
Um, did you swear an oath that they'll protect our rights?
Yes, sir.
Then why? What did I do? What did I say?
You were asked to leave the meeting because you were out of order, sir.
You follow a dictator? Is that what you're going to do? Is that what, just like the Nazis said? The Nazis, I'm just following orders.
You're no longer welcome at this meeting.
I know, I'm walking backwards, you stupid fuck.
I understand that.
And, and guess what? I'm just going to come back to the next one. I'm going to keep coming back to the next one. Fuck you guys. I would have stopped coming here a long fucking time ago. A long time ago. If you would, not specifically you, I think I've only seen you once, but if you guys would have stood up for our fucking rights, we would have walked the fuck away. Walked the fuck away.
Watch your back, you're coming up to the detectors.
So how far off this property? Just to the sidewalk, right?
Yes, sir. You must get onto the public sidewalk.
Yep, no problem, man. I got a nice bright sign for you when I come right back. Don't you worry. And remember, Happy Go Fuck A Pig Day.
Thank you, sir.
Go fuck yourself, you pig.
Thank you, sir. You too.
Listen, it's all true, so watch yourself. Having a good time, though?
Always, sir.
Good.
Always.
I'm glad. You're going to take guns my last day.
I think I had that boat accident. I think the video on that, right? And that boat owns 60 people on that boat, and I correct. The boat that has suffered the accident, it owes 60 people on that boat. I could not even see that side side. Why would those guys on that boat superman everybody's business, anybody's power on that boat? I should be sorry for those around here.
Did you say that regarding the marina?
This is water. I can't imagine some process like that, but it's in my water. I know it's raining, wow. I need to, why? I might not want to come down, but that happens, I'm going to go, that's in the nation way, that, that, that's what's going on, it's 60 people. The way people go, the job I'm proud for, people on this boat, that you're the best people. Please, if you answer, and I have some more, this way. Do you understand what we do here?
Let me try to make balance, us, and try to find some for this.
I can't hear you. I didn't hear what you said. It's just me that's here. I'm hearing you, right? Did you hear what I said? Go ahead.
It's a good time, it's a good time to speak.
Again, with a man being a relation, and you want to, you think it's time to fly, what time to fly now? Why make time when we mentioned money and so deal about? People pay the other's boat, so you have it more than one way on your deal.
Should I be...
If you make a word up, I'm playing any, first of all, my time is filled, because I want that power, your passion, and your actions. Yeah, and they say, right? You don't take away the right, I hear, I hear, I hear, I hear, I'll be feeling fine. If they ever, 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 I hear.
Who's first? Anyone else desire to hear, hear, or give an answer?
Anyone to agree with me?
Second.
I oppose. 96.1.
Otherwise, the personnel may be required to work with that law, consulting here, such as over a fracture, like, for how you can, for medical services, supported tool development system, upgrading, your July 21, 25, December 21, 25, in amounts of $173,812 for total capacity, around $506,548. $506,548, which is a RFP, 24/24, Alfa, Georgia, Texas, Texas.
Mayor, councilman, mayor, IP director, uh, this is, uh, for support services associated with us operating a building system, that's all our reporting, send that in to us.
I have just a question, is, uh, do you truly operate against your things with businesses and all Clearwater as well, just, uh, my major concern is going to be utility, auto utility, uh, infrastructure we have in Clearwater, and it does upgrade, it's very complicated to administrate, it seems there's a lot of, uh, issues, especially with water, they have water and electrical, it seems that we have a system, I'm just scared that if we automate it too much, that both we lose that kind of like interaction, or a lot of these more complicated issues, we dread, when we deal with the older infrastructure. So I'd like to move to automation, I just, I'm wary that too much move to automation at these high prices will kind of further comp- complicate more detailed matters that can't happen with this, that that's, that's my concern, I, I hope it addresses it.
Anyone else here decide, figure, figure out? 96.1.
Motion for, for the deadline, 6.1.
I oppose. 96.1.
Otherwise, the purpose order, I think, very limited, I have services, also located at 18, has to be seen at the state of G, or Florida, and the city of Clearwater provides vessels with the gold, calling it storage and water, uh, disposal services, and one of the, all these, of Clearwater Police Department, and Marine Aviation Department, the amount of $1,000 for the initial term, but two, one-year renewal on, for, 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 and not by super, for, 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 for.
Good evening, Ken, Mike Dolery, aviation director, this is a agreement, uh, with contractors with the vessels and, uh, for the water area, we have questions.
I'm Mr. Valula. This is a marina with a war cluster. Now, God, um, this is just another thinly veiled money grab by Clearwater Police. Florida Fish and Wildlife Commission is responsible for removing derelict vessels in the entire state of Florida. Therefore, removal, towing, storage, disposal, all of these things are under the jurisdiction of FWCC. This is not the jurisdiction of Todd Johnson and Clearwater Police. It's just another example of Clearwater Police overreach in their ongoing attempts to justify their existence. As we saw with the Clearwater ferry disaster, PCSO is the primary law enforcement agency. Now, this money is to be paid from the general fund, not the bloated police budget. I don't understand that. However, if there's any diving to be done, fortunately, we have the double dipper Eric Dandy, who is a diver in more ways than one. I guess that's why his hearing is held as dumb. Do not approve this unnecessary transfer of funds.
Anyone else here desire to agree?
Motion to approve, 6.5, second.
We're in construction contact for Razorback LLC from Springs, Georgia, Florida, where we refer to us as Plan 2, construction level, run for play that they announced at $238,888, $46,000, bid, 27,000, 000, 000, 000, 000. But there's a kind of work order two through W S, let's say, for construction oversight and together, program for the R O two, I W one, French Open, in the amount of $57,000, $43,800, increase in product amount to, um, $127,933, $13,000, 8 cents, to $184,357, 6 cents, so to continue contract awarded, and request for qualification, 2016, 19, and engineer, research, and, and advise your professional, sense of duty.
Good evening, mayor and council, Richard Gardner, Director of Public Utilities. The item before you today is for a contract with Razorback to retrofit the 92 water treatment plan in Jackson, while, and a supplemental order for W S B U S A to provide construction oversight of the project, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Move to approve again, 96.7, second.
96.1. 96.1. 96.1.
We're asking for purchase order Razorback LLC for current water maintenance services in the annual not succeed amount of $550,000. For the option for two, one, we're able to settle to I T P, $15,000, $1,000, for professional services.
The item before you today is for a purchase order with Razorback for inspection maintenance for repair of the city's water reclamation facilities and clear bottles. I'm happy to answer any questions.
What is the public's idea? Are you saying mandatory?
Okay, if you're, yeah, I have 6.7.
96.1. 96.1.
There we have three ordinances, we have 90, 22, dash, 25, first, ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, annexing certain real property located on the south side of Lurk Street, approximately 175 feet west of Bridge Avenue, whose post office address is 1609 Lurk Street, Clearwater, Florida, 3375. The other corporate limits of the city are redefining the boundary line of the city to the city condition, providing effective date. Next up, we have ordinance number 90, 23, dash, 25, ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, admitting the future land use settlement of the conference at Plankton City, designated land use for certain property located on the south side of Lurk Street, approximately 175 feet west of Bridge Avenue, whose post office address is 1609 Lurk Street, Clearwater, Florida, 3375, upon annexation into the city of Clearwater as residential low, R L, providing effective date. Finally, we have ordinance number 90, 24, dash, 25, ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, admitting the zoning areas of the city by joining certain real property located on the south side of Lurk Street, approximately 175 feet west of Bridge Avenue, whose post office address is 1609 Lurk Street, Clearwater, Florida, 3375, upon annexation into the city of Clearwater, as low medium density residential, L M D R, providing effective date.
Good evening, Lauren, that's a big involvement, uh, this is a standard voluntary annexation for a detached dwelling, uh, on a corner, I'm sorry, from 0.16 acres, and plans located at 1609 Lurk Street, the parcel having the school janitor on it, and the applicant, applicant requesting annexation for all the existing very cooler surfaces. Um, that analysis concluded that the annexation petition is consistent with the city's project plan and community development code, the details of the staff, and, 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 and.
Again, my name is Christine Stuck, and I want to make sure that you're aware, and putting in the comments, that if you do not write any other comments down, I will file federal charges on this, you may not... No, actually, you are, and I will not file, uh, federal charges on this, you may not file a, you are, you are, you are.
Ma'am, you're being asked to leave the meeting. You're no longer welcome at this meeting, you're welcome to come back to future meetings. Ma'am, you're no longer welcome at this meeting.
Uh, what's the law? Tell me the law that, tell me the law. His name is Richmond, tell me the law, Richmond. Tell me, are you refusing to?
Ma'am, you're being asked to leave the meeting.
I don't have to, if I'm be- I'm being told or asked, stop intimidating me, back off.
I'm not, ma'am, I'm not intimidating.
You're intimidating me, back off. Is there a law that says that I have to leave?
The mayor says you're no longer welcome.
I don't care what the mayor says, he is not, uh, the authority, the legislator is. Now, are you breaking the law, Richmond? Are you breaking the law? Do I have a legal obligation to leave? Do I have a legal obligation to leave?
Yes, ma'am.
What is the legal obligation? I don't care what the mayor said, the mayor does not, uh, have the authority over legislature, does he? You're breaking the law? Uh-uh, don't touch me, don't touch me. Baganski, Baganski. Under what law, Richmond? Under what law? Under what law? What is the statute? What is the law? If you're not operating under the law, you're breaking it.
Ma'am, you're not welcome back inside the meeting, okay?
Richmond, you are breaking the law. You, oh, I'm welcome back here, you don't have the right to kick me out.
Yes, sir, what can I do for you?
What's law does she break, for the record?
She's being asked to leave the meeting.
No, I'm being forced out. This isn't asking, I'm saying, no, I don't want to go.
I'm just asking because of...
Okay, that's not, that's not an option.
It's not an option, that means I'm not being asked, I'm being forced. It's against the law for you to do that. What statute am I obligated to? I'm going to record it.
No, sir. 8441. 8441.
8441.
Yes, sir.
Uh, mayor, thank, thank, uh, those in attendance, uh, for your patience, understanding that they all, if there's those who have a lot of distractions, but it is, um, is part of what, what we go through, and they have the right to speak, and, uh, but so thank you for sitting in the seat today.
Under what law? Under what law?
Don't resist, don't resist, ma'am. If you resist, it'll be another...
I'm not resisting.
Okay, put your hands behind your back, then.
I can't.
Okay, let go of this.
Hey, can you take my stuff? Oh, look at him go. Do you want my pen?
Drop the pen, ma'am, okay.
Under what law? I mean, they're arresting me, under what law? There isn't, I haven't violated the law. Are you seriously going to do this when I haven't violated the law? You guys need to stay with me, please stay with me. Under what law, Richmond? Give me the statute, give me the constitutional, uh, thing that says a, a, a mayor is above the law. How is the mayor above the law? That cop has my phone.
410 to 419, can you send your guy? He's got 11015.
They've got my computer and my phones on there. What law have I broken? I have not broken the law. What law have I broken? Hartman, how are you? We've got hearings tomorrow. This is fun. I've got a hearing with you tomorrow on that false arrest.
I'm at here tomorrow.
Oh, I don't care. You're at my hearing tomorrow with the false arrest. You have been witness in it.
I'm at here tomorrow, call me, sorry.
Hey, they're arresting me! Handcuffs! They're arresting me because I spoke and I didn't break the law. I did not break the law, they said that the, um, the mayor said that I had to leave, but the mayor doesn't have the law, and they will not tell me what law I have broken. I have not broken the law, this is a false arrest. I have not broken the law. This is a false arrest. I have not broken the law, they will not, what law have I broken? What law have I broken? The mayor said I have to leave, that it's not a law, they may not violate one, hearing tomorrow, right?
I might require some meta, some, uh, some help leaving here tonight, I'm the last person to leave here.
We'll be there with you.
For all the standing staff and the support, and all the volunteers are out. I was blessed to have very talented individuals, uh, wearing my collection. I want to thank the Crystal Valley Company for...
Can you take Dan's phone?
What, uh, on that phone?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have to go do a something today.
And last, but certainly not least, all those who attended the event and supported this great cause. Last but not least, I want to acknowledge, and thank our city manager and all staff that participated in the negotiation of, and discussion regarding the, 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 um, I understand how challenging that is, to speak for, represent five very different individuals within Sunshine. Um, your heart of earth has been really, thank you.